We're on the Quaid zoning board of appeals to order. If everyone will please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. Before we get underway, there's a few administrative matters I need to go over. First off, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified. If so notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevators. Use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. The meetings are being recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of a record and minutes, not for the purpose of a transcript. So when you come up to the podium, if you would please identify yourself each time with your name and address so she can keep track of who it is that's speaking. The board will follow the items in the order they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda on the table next to the door. Once the case has been called, the applicant or their representative will come to the podium, identify him or herself, state their address, and then present their case. After they state their address, they should pause and be sworn. Then they can present their case. During the presentation by the applicant or their representative, the members of the board have the opportunity to question or comment or engage in discussions with the applicant. Once that process has been completed, we'll then open the case to public input. Anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding the application should come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and their questions and comments should be directed to the board, not to the applicant or their representative. During the public input portion, we have three categories so far that we've established. First, we call on those who wish to speak in favor of the application. Then we call on those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. And then we call those who want to talk about the application but aren't either for it or against it necessarily. Once all the public input has been completed, the applicant or their representative will be given the opportunity to respond to anything that came up during the public input portion. Once that process is completed, we will then close that hearing and move on to the next case. After all the cases have been heard, the board will take a short recess and then return to deliberate on the cases in the order for which the applicants remain present. So if the applicant for the first case has left, we would take up the second case and do the cases of the applicants who are present, then go back to number one and go through the rest of the docket. No further input is allowed at that point, but you're welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations. If you wish to leave, you can either catch it on TV or you can find out the results by calling the planning and zoning department tomorrow morning after 9:00 a.m. We'll call our cases now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 180...excuse me, ZB 1810-1. Upon the matter of request by Driscoll Sat for an area variance to install a six-foot-high side yard fence exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 180 Whipple Lane in an R2 residential district.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
My name is Driscoll Sat. I am the owner of the property of 180 Whipple Lane, Rondicote, New York, 14622.
You'd raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. I swear everything that I say tonight is truth, nothing but the truth.
What's that?
I'm swearing that everything that I'm saying is true.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Dear members of the zoning board of appeal, I am seeking a variance of a single family home at 180 Whipple Lane, Rondicote, New York. Current zoning rules say that the fence must be no more than four feet tall from outside kitchen backyard to the end of the house. I respectfully request to install a wood fence that is six feet tall from the end of my neighbor. Fence six feet length and eighteen feet width. I want to make this area as a family entertainment and a private place for my wife and daughter who are wearing hijab scarf to spend great time together with their friends and family. On the other hand, a fence four feet tall is too short and every pedestrian can see them from Crest Ridge Lane Street, which is embarrassing my family privacy. Plus, this area is shaded in the morning and my family can spend more time in it. A wood fence six feet tall will not have any effect in my neighbor or block any view at all.
Now, essentially what you're looking to do is to continue the fence that's on the east side of your property forward to what? To the sideline of the house and then connect it to the side of the house, correct?
Yeah, it's true, yeah.
And we received a letter from a neighbor of yours who raised some questions concerning the existing fence. So I want to go through that so that everyone's aware of what applies to the concerns that she raised. The first concern that she raised was that the fence had already been constructed on the property. But she said she founds this troubling as the variance hasn't been granted yet. The fence that you've put up, this is a corner lot, and in your instance, although the house faces Whipple Lane and has a mailing address of Whipple Lane, the town views your house as fronting on the side street. What is that? Crest Ridge Lane. So the fence that you've put up doesn't require a variance because that's regarded as a backyard fence, which is allowed to be constructed exactly or at least close to the way you've done it.
Yes.
So the first concern that it was constructed without the variance that she raises doesn't apply. Then she refers to it as a side yard fence, which is not supposed to go past the front side corner of the house, and that the fence goes all the way down to within inches of the sidewalk and runs parallel. So she again is talking about the fence that the code allows because it's not a side yard fence, it's your backyard fence, according to...
Took up...
This is the problem with these corner lots, is that they're developed and used with one orientation, and the town refers to them as oriented differently. And so that confuses people, and that's why I'm taking the time to go through these things so that she and others who may have questions are aware of why these things are the way they are. Then she says that while the fence is constructed out of a material similar to other fencing on nearby properties, that they don't go down to the sidewalk, they stop even with the house, and it's not in keeping with the neighborhood. Again, that's because she's allowed to do that, you're allowed to do that under the code, because it's a backyard fence, not a front yard fence. She closes by indicating that her mother, who is your neighbor, has no objection to a fence in general, just that the rules constructing it be followed, and that her side of the fence be maintained properly. She said it was a bit jarring for her to see it go up as you didn't let her know beforehand that you intended to do that, and she realizes there's no law requiring neighbors to speak to each other, but she believes it would have been a courteous thing to do. So those were the concerns she raised, which don't really address your variance request because your variance request is for a different part of the fence that, as I observed tonight, has not as yet been put up.
Yeah.
But the one thing that I didn't see when I drove by is the sign that said that the property was subject to a public hearing. Did you have that sign?
Yeah, I had it in my garage, yeah.
You had it in your garage?
Yeah, yeah.
How long has it been in your garage?
Yeah, since I got it, yeah.
Since you got it?
Yeah.
Well, nobody can see it in your garage.
I know, yeah.
And the reason that we give you the sign is to put it out in the lawn so that people in the neighborhood who may be outside the area where they get noticed from the town, I think it's 200 feet of the property. If they're within 200 feet of the property, they get a postcard saying that there's an application. But beyond that, they don't. And the whole purpose of the sign is to let people know so that they can call the town and get some information about what's going on. Putting the sign in your garage defeats the whole purpose for which you were given the sign. And normally, I don't know how my colleagues will feel in this particular case, but I believe that if the sign hasn't been put out in front, that the application should be delayed a month with the sign displayed so that people can have the opportunity. The whole idea is about giving notice to the community of what's going on. We publish it in the paper, but not everybody reads that. We send it to people 200 feet away, but not everybody is 200 feet. There are people outside that for whom the sign is the only notice that they have of the application. So it's very disturbing to hear that you picked up the sign and kept it in your garage. I assume you keep your garage closed and people wouldn't be looking in your garage for the sign.
Yeah, I think this is my first experience, you know, like to come to the hearing, you know, I didn't know, you know, all the procedure, you know. I'm, you know, I'm sorry for, you know, what happened, but I try, you know, because I get the permit and I thought this is my house and my privacy, I didn't think that anybody else can, you know, like can make a question about, you know, if I'm doing, you know, something for my house, you know what I'm saying?
A neighbor who lives two blocks away from you, doesn't get the notice and doesn't read the paper, sees the sign, would have the right to come in here and tell us their view about whether we should grant it or not. That's the way things work. It's part of what, you know, having input from the community is a part of this process, and we're responsive to that. We don't always follow what, you know, neighbors say. It's not a question of polling the neighbors. If it was a question of polling the neighbors, we wouldn't exist. We'd just send out surveys to the neighbors and let them decide. But, so, as I said, I don't know how the rest of my colleagues on the board feel, but for me, I think your application should be tabled a month to have the sign put out in front so that people have the opportunity. And it may be that there won't be anyone, but the sign is given for a reason.
Okay, sorry for that.
All right. Anyone else have any questions or comments concerning the application?
I have one concern. I don't think that our...correct me if I'm wrong, this is for the legal. I don't think that our zoning code have anything to do with religious preferences. Is that correct? It's just the code for the public. Because in his statement, he heard specific reasons for the fence because of her job. I don't think that's in the code. The code is the code regardless of what religion you follow, regardless of that's your personal preference and practice. Is that correct?
You know, I'm not entirely sure I understand the question.
The purpose of the fence, he stated, was because his female members of his family weren't her job. I don't think that's in the code.
No, it's not in the code, but, you know, I think you can consider privacy as a proper, you know, consideration in granting the request. You know, I wouldn't make a decision based on whether, what the applicant's religious beliefs are, but privacy is certainly a proper concern of the board.
All right. So you understand the difference?
Yeah. Thanks.
I do have a question about the location of the fence. Is there...I noticed that your neighbor's fence ends at what I think is the rear foundation line of their property, the wooden fence.
Yeah, in the back, in the front yard by Crest Ridge Lane you're talking about? My other neighbor?
On Crest Ridge Lane, yes, the other neighbor. The fence that you're going to tie it into?
Yeah.
All right? That fence, that ends back there where that's where the code allows you to stop, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there some reason that tying it into the house there? I mean, I realize it would cost you maybe 15 feet, but are you really going to be using that 50 feet much with the fence?
Yeah, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna like put like in the, you know, in the future, you know, like make it as, you know, like as a place for entertainment, you know, like change, put like some stone on top of the grass, something like that in the future.
Oh, like a patio kind of thing?
Yeah, so I'm trying to do it like, you know, in the future, yeah.
All right. And is there a...I see a concrete pad. Is that for a door that comes out of the back there?
Yeah.
Back of the house?
Yeah, I have like a garage door from there, yeah. I have a garage door you can come in through.
And that's where the concrete pad is, right?
Yeah, I'll wait to the end, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I don't particularly have a problem with that sign for this particular case, only because we're talking about a pretty small area and requests and so forth. I think it is important that it's there just as much as you do. And the other thing is, I'd like to ask the applicant to speak up a little bit because I can't hear what he's saying.
Speak closer to the microphone if you would.
Okay, sorry for that.
That's good.
That's better, yeah.
As I said, this is the first time coming to the audience like that in my life, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm not really, you know, like used to it, and, you know, I'm trying to, you know, just to do my best, that's it.
I understand that. We try and make, since a lot of people watch this, I try and make sure that people are aware of things like that so that others who come in don't make the same, you know, omission.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not really all that worried about it in this particular case, but it's a rule.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns for the applicant? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about fences, corner lots, anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next item on our agenda.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1810-2. Upon the matter of request by Joan E. Lang for area variances to construct a new detached garage exceeding maximum permitted height, square footage, garage frontage, and garage footprint on premises 684 Lake Shore Boulevard in an R1 residential district.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joan Lang, and I live at 684 Lake Shore Boulevard.
If you'd raise your right hand?
Yes.
You swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I'm here to request a 40 by 40 storage garage on my 36,000 square foot property. It's my lot size is 200 by 180 feet. This storage garage will add only 9% lot coverage to the property where 25% is max. My husband Dominic and I, we've lived on Lake Shore Boulevard for 31 years, and the reason why we do want to have a 40 by 40 storage garage is because we've got multiple vehicles that we have to store on other people's property or locations for the winter, and we would like to be able to put our stuff on our property. The storage garage, it's going to be located over 100 feet from the front property line. So if you look at the tape map that I provided, you could see that that storage garage is going to be going behind those arborvities that are extremely high. So there isn't much of a view to see this, the storage garage that we would like to have put up. Let's see, we have spoken to our neighbor to the left of me at 654, and they provided a letter which should be in your packet. They have signed it, and they are in favor of the storage garage. And as you could see, they have, they provided the colors of the garage for the walls and the roof. And the arborvities, they surround my whole property, so the view is pretty much isolated from a lot of the neighbors on my street. Behind my home is an abandoned railroad bed, so behind there, there's no neighbors. And speaking of my backyard, and being so private, we have had somewhat people break in to our existing garage and stole a welder and tools, and recently a trailer hitch that my husband had laying back there. So this 40 by 40 storage garage, which will have no windows, and we would be able to put our belongings in, would be safe for us.
Part of the standard for granting a variance is to determine the extent to which the variance is needed to meet the identified need for the variance. And as I looked through your materials, this is a 1,600 square foot building, if my math is right, 40 by 40?
Yes.
And you already have a 400 square foot garage. So you're going to have garage space that exceeds the house space. And as I look at the diagram that you had, you have a 28-foot boat, and you've got a 25-foot pickup truck.
Yes.
And so I'm wondering why a 30 by 30 won't meet your needs as opposed to a 40 by 40, and that is still a considerable amount over what's allowed since 900 is the total that's allowed.
My existing garage, as you can see from this picture, my car just fits in that existing garage, it's so small. So I really can't fit too much, like lawn tractor and my car in this existing garage.
Mrs. Lang, can I ask you to use the mic, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Just because of the feedback that's coming through. Thank you.
So I really can't put too much in this existing garage as my small car just fits in there and the lawn tractor. Can my husband come up and speak too?
You swear that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
The existing garage has three motorcycles in it. I own Harley-Davidsons, and they take up most of the garage space in there. And I have five classic cars that she neglected, to tell you, along with the boat and the pickup and all the other lawn equipment, that that's what I need the square footage for. I have a 1970 Coupe de Ville. It's like a battleship. And I have it in a 40-foot car trailer, or, I'm sorry, I have it in a 30-foot car trailer parked on the premises because I got no, I have no place to put the vehicle, and I don't want, I don't want it to look like a used car lot. Every vehicle, if you were at the house, is plated and insured, and in the winter, I just spread them out all over Rondicote and Monroe County. I have friends in Webster, and it costs me approximately $1,500 a month to store the vehicles for the winter. The boat is, the boat is the most expensive thing to store. I store it inside in Webster. This is where the square footage comes in that I need to acquire to put all the cars in one area.
What did Baffy say? Baffy rinks itself into it.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
I've got one question. Is this now one property? Because on your...
Yes, we did attach the lot next to my house, so it is about an acre of property that I...
Okay, because when you read the drawing, it just says 674 and 684.
Yeah, I know, it is confusing.
Just wanted to make sure it wasn't just a...
Recently, we just had the properties combined. We've owned the property next door forever, and we never combined it, and we just recently did. And I had talked to a friend, and he gave me a lot of pointers, Mr. Rank. And so I've been in the process of getting the property ready to put the garage up. That's why there's an arborvitie roll. So if you drove by or was at my house, when you sit in front of my house, the one picture shows you can't, you cannot see anything. There's a gold car sitting there, you can't see anything in the backyard. And that arborvitie roll is probably about 100 feet back from the street.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about storage, cars, anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much for hearing me.
Board members, before I announce the next case, just a reminder to keep your cellphones away from the mic. It might be causing the interference that we're hearing or the feedback we're hearing over the speaker, FYI.
Well, Mr. Scott's waiting to see if his wife is, she's five days overdue, so he's going to keep his phone on. He's got a good reason.
That's fine. Oh, yeah, on is fine, just not, you know, not right up to the base. I think that's what it is.
I'll keep it in my lap.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1810-3. Upon the matter of request by William Price, RLA, acting as agent for Seaway Realty LLC for a use variance to expand a previously granted use for the existing daycare facility to extend parking to the rear lot and an area variance for less than required parking on premises 250 Empire Boulevard in an R6 residential district and tax ID 107.07-2-77 and an R1 residential district.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is William Price. I'm a landscape architect, and I represent David Secconi and Bridget Shumway, who are the owners of Secway, S-E-C-W-A-Y Realty. Also joined by Jeannie Harris. Jeannie is the director of program operations for Generation Daycare Centers, and she would be able to answer any questions you may have regarding the operations of the daycare center, things that I can't answer. This application...
I need you to raise your right hand before we get underway. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. And before we get underway, the reference was made in the application to a previous use variance that was granted by this board in 1999 or 2000, and I don't think there's anyone on the board who recalls that. Do we have a record of that use variance anywhere that... Well, let me ask this. Is it correct that a use variance was granted? All right. So I'm going to assume that the board at that time then would have made the requisite findings for a use variance, and that those findings became final at the end of the expiration of any time for anyone to challenge the granting of the use variance with respect to that property. So that pertains to the front parcel, and then the parcel that's before us tonight is immediately behind it with no access to any public road. Is that correct?
That is correct. They are...
The only way in or out is through your property.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
That would make it of limited value, I would think.
Yes, and it's, the area of that back parcel is 8,100 square feet, where the size, the minimum size lot in the R1 district is 9,000 square feet, and the depth of a legal lot in the R1 district is 125 feet in the depth of that lot. The current lot is only 81 feet. It would make it a very challenging site to develop for anything other than the support use for the adjacent property, which at this time is a daycare center.
And am I correct that it's your intention to re-subdivide them into a single parcel?
Yes, it would be.
Okay.
But as the process goes... The, but as the process goes, this is the, is the first step, and then we would go through the process of a, of a administrative re-sub, combining those into a, into a single lot, and then, uh, we have made application to the planning board for the additional parking that, uh, would provide the ten spaces that, on the, on the back parcel. Um, are there, so-
If you have anything else to add?
I, I think it's, uh, I hope it, uh, is self-explanatory based on the information that we, we provided on what it, what the intent is. I think this is a, a benefit to the, both to the property, the employees, and the customers who drop their kids off and pick them up, but also to the adjacent neighborhood and the adjacent, uh, property owners. Um, you know, it's, it came to a point where, uh, because the parking lot was getting so jammed up, uh, with employees, that the employees were asked to find someplace else to park, at least during the rush hour while kids were being dropped off, and then, you know, go move their cars, and that's kind of what has created the problem. The other, the other problem is, is that the, the parking lot itself, the back half of the existing parking lot, the last six spaces are on a slope that's approximately, you know, five to ten percent grade, so if you open your door, the door flies open, and it's very hard to get in and out of the car, uh, because the angle of it is, is perpendicular to the, to the fall line, so it's not parallel with it, so the, you have problems with that. And then in the winter, I guess there's been several instances where they have to actually tow cars out of the area, because the, the slope is so steep and slick, you can't get up and out of it again. So this is, the intent of this project is to, to fix the grades on that, on the existing, uh, back half of the parking lot, and then add the additional spaces in back, and that would, um, both provide, you know, the additional parking, but make the existing parking also usable, uh, and keep, keep employees and customers dropping and picking up their kids off the adjacent, uh, street Lafayette and the adjacent property owner's, uh, parking lot.
Good enough.
Okay, well, my question is, that's a very distinct grade difference there, and I, I mean, are you gonna pave on that, or do you have to raise it up or lower something, or how do you do that?
You, you, it's a little bit of a combination, so where, if you were to the site and you are about the middle of the existing building, you'll notice that the grade comes up and then it drops to the back, so there's a high point in the middle, so we're gonna have to cut that high point down a little bit, you start cutting that down, but then you're filling as you go back, and you have to raise the, there's, there's this one manhole, that that manhole cover needs to be adjusted and brought up, and then you taper down, so, but it's at a much lower, you know, shallower grade when you get to the back of the property, and, and the, that middle part as well, which is currently a problem.
There's no stream back there, or any kind of water issue, or?
There's, there's no stream, um, the drainage around everything does kind of funnel to that low point, but that low point goes quite a ways north as well. Um, we will be handling the drainage with, uh, some subsurface, uh, retention, as well as surface rain gardens, and, you know, there is no storm system to tie into, so it will be dissipated, uh, what doesn't infiltrate will be dissipated through a level spreader, which, you know, just basically mimics the way water runs off the site today.
Okay, that's gonna, that's gonna be quite a job.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it'll be interesting.
Uh, I have a question for staff. Is it, is this plan subject to site plan approval?
Yeah, yes, it is, and we have made application to the planning board.
Okay, so they're, they'll, they'll deal with the-
There's a lot of drainage and engineering and-
And the landscaping?
That was submitted, and I believe we're on the schedule for the October twenty-ninth planning board meeting.
And there's a conceptual stormwater analysis that was attached to the file as well, that the planning board will be reviewing.
Yes.
By Costage.
Yes, yep.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none?
How many, how many students are there, how many kids are there at the location?
There are currently sixty-seven enrolled, and the center is authorized for ninety students.
And are those, they're all, uh, childcare, or do you have, uh, pre-K students there as well?
This is where I need help, so Jeannie's gonna step in, and Jeannie Harris, you may have to answer your, raise your hand.
Swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Yes, we have two pre-K classrooms, two, uh, state ed-funded pre-K classrooms.
Okay, and they're, they run specific times during the day, so you have a, sort of a rush at the beginning of the day, and then a rush at the end of the day, like eight o'clock and two-thirty or something like that?
Right, programmatically, we staggered the start times for that reason, to limit to try to, uh, help the traffic come in and go, and so one of the classrooms starts at eight-thirty-one, starts at nine o'clock.
So your, your plan is, is to get yourself some staff parking in the back, so your families can use the front lot to drop off quickly in the, in the beginning and the, the end of the day?
That is correct, and we need to leave the spaces up closer to the front door for the, the parents dropping the kids off.
And I, just one more question, do you have any outdoor play space for the kids there currently? How mu, do you know how much space there is?
Yes, it's in, it's in, it's, um, it's in the back, directly in the back, and the parking lot would wrap around the backside of the, of the playground.
Do you know how many square feet that is?
I, I do not off the top of my head, but I'm, I'm-
My concern is, is that you're losing a lot of green space in that lot, and with ninety, sixty to ninety kids there, it doesn't look like a ton of outdoor space for the kids to play, that's my only concern.
Yeah.
So we stagger playground use as well, so there's two spaces, there's one for toddlers, and then there's an old, there's a little bit of larger space for preschool, uh, um, and older children, so we stagger use times as well. They're required to have, by regulation, sixty minutes of outdoor play a day, so they have a half an hour in the morning, half an hour in the afternoon, and we just stagger the use of that. So the green space that's out back there, we've not made use of hi, historically anyways.
Have you considered using that as outdoor space for education and, and children's play?
Well, more outdoor space is always a good thing, but the parking, um, just if, if Bill wants to step in, the parking, for us, the parking lot is more of a safety and a, you know, a, it's a, it's a more pressing concern, we've been able to manage the playground space.
Sure, I, I work in the field, so I, I can relate and empathize with their, with the situation you're dealing with.
We have infant spots available, just saying.
I just wanna say-
I'll let you know.
I just wanna say that I, I visited, I drive by the property, because I, I work like right around the corner from there, um, and I visit the property on Friday evening, and it's quite a drop back there, that parking is, is rough, so.
Yeah, it's steep.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about parking, grading, daycare, anything like that?
Talk all about that.
Seeing none?
Thank you.
We'll close the hearing with respect to this case, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The, is there, is the applicant with respect to thirteen seventy-two Bay Shore Boulevard present? Yes.
The motion to-
So, is there a motion to remove this application from the table?
Make that motion?
All right, Mr. Upson makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Antini, seconds, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Case number ZB one eight zero seven dash seven, upon the matter of request by Joseph Prestajacamo for area variances to construct a dock with boat hoist and jet ski platform exceeding maximum permitted square footage and length, and with less than required side setback on premises thirteen seventy-two Bay Shore Boulevard and an R two residential district.
You swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Joe Prestajacamo, I'm the owner of, um, the home at thirteen seventy-two Bay Shore Boulevard, and, uh, I am applying for three different variances, a side setback variance, a, uh, length of dock variance, and a, um, variance for the square footage for, um, for my dock, it exceeds the town's limit. Uh, the reason for all these things, I, I have to go out, um, ninety feet to get a stable water depth, I'm, I'm right near Denzmore Creek on Bay Shore Boulevard, where the cattails jet out, as you see in the photos, that, the, um, this side is north, this side is south, if you can't see the, uh, directions, but the, to the north of my dock is a, um, a huge section of cattails that surrounds Denzmore Creek, and the reasoning for the ninety feet opposed to the fifty feet, which the town allows, is to get a more stable water depth. Therefore, if I go out ninety feet, then the reason for the excess in square footage is because I have to get more, uh, stable, um, water depth, and therefore the reason for the, um, um, the, the side setback is a totally different issue. The property line, hold on a second. Right here is a, the property line between my southern neighbor and my, and my lot. It's approximately twelve feet, uh, three inches from where the, uh, boat launch area is to the property line. I cannot move my dock any further north, um, that came, that came from the D E C, the Department of State, and your, um, your attorney who came out with, um, Carrie Ivors to inspect the property.
Is that boat launch on your property?
Yes, yes. Yeah, um, so I had asked, I had asked the D E C if I can, you know, keep it, keep it within the fifty feet, as long as I can, I was able to dredge, and they won't allow that, either will the Department of State, so therefore I have to go out ninety feet to get more stable water depth, um.
Just so I'm clear, the property to the south of yours, is that the Legozio's?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, now I've got it clear, all right.
Uh, I have, uh, brought this to the attention of all, all the neighbors, um, I have, inside your pamphlets, I have a, um, uh, three, three, uh, written statements from the neighbors, and then I have another two here that will testify that they're in favor of it. I have approvals from O G S, which is the, uh, Office of General Services with the state, I have approvals from the Department of State, which is, the, uh, the permit is in your files there, too. I have a, uh, a, uh, an approval from the D E C with a waiting period of fifteen days after a publication comes out, um, which will, uh, it's fifteen day waiting period once it, once it hits the paper this Friday, and at that point, fifteen days from that point, um, a permit will be granted if there isn't any major opposition. And the only other permit I'm waiting for is from the Arm of, um, the Corps of Army Engineers, which is forthcoming soon. Because of the situation where I can't move the, the dock further for the side setback, I can't move it further north, which is that way again, uh, is because of the, uh, the, the refusal from the D E C to, uh, and the Department of State to have it get any closer to the wetlands, so at, at this point, if I don't put it there, I really have nowhere to put it, so that's why it's, it's so, that's why we're asking for, uh, the side setback Any questions?
Well, I'm looking at the, um, letters that have come from your, your neighbors to the south, and I'm, and I'm looking at what you've put up here. What is it that appears to be between the dock and their property line? There's an area that's highlighted.
Joe, uh, Mr. Prestajacamo, can, um, by Andre is a microphone, a portable microphone, if you don't mind just using that, please, thank you.
All right, that's a, um, a floating jet ski platform that attaches to the dock, it goes on and off with, uh, a couple hooks that would, um, that attaches right to the dock, it doesn't need any post or anything like that. The, the dock will be anchored by several, uh, seven-inch posts, probably down, and, um, like I said, any, anything further is not allowed, so therefore I have only twelve, twelve inches, I'm sorry, twelve feet, three inches to work with between my, my, uh, Mr. Legozio's property and my boat launch area.
Mrs. Chairman, um, on the application, you show the, the jet ski on the opposite side.
This is revised, I, I, I gave a copy, it should have been in your pamphlet, all, all ten copies I made.
So is the, I mean, what I have says revised, it says it was received September fourth of twenty eighteen, and it shows the jet ski on the north side.
Well, you can, Ms. Nichols will show you. Yeah, I think it's on the back of your, uh, Department of State, um-
Let me, let me just ask a question, is there any reason why the jet ski can't be on the north side? The hoist is allowed to be there.
Right, we're moving the hoist over there, but, uh, um, because it was already on that side, I didn't wanna complicate the Department of State, because they already had it approved on this side of the dock, and then it would have to be another new application or modification, so I left it where it is now.
But that's a portable thing, correct?
Correct.
So that could be on either side, or the sec, the Department of State, doesn't seem to be very concerned about which side it's on, if it's portable, right?
Right.
The bigger concern is about its permanent stuff.
That's correct.
Okay.
But where is that?
So how many feet is there between the property line and the south edge of the dock that you're proposing?
Uh, there's approximately six feet and, uh, six feet, three inches. From the edge of the, uh, dock to the property line.
Andre, did you find it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
The letter that we have from, um, Legozio's, your neighbor, indicates that this dock is a new dock that was put in last year, is that correct?
That's correct.
And this is much bigger, they're claiming, than what was there before?
It'll be approximately thirty feet, thirty-five feet out, a little further, three sections come out, they're ten-foot sections. It's just, um, I, I, I had water depth charts that I presented to the state, the O G S came right down, uh, to, to, to look at the site, they witnessed how shallow it is, and it's very inconsistently shallow the first fifty feet, and it just, it's still shallow out towards the ninety feet, but it's a more stable, uh, more stability- for water depth.
Now, you've had a number of delays on this, right?
Yes.
Waiting for approvals?
Yes. Because we had it all set. Originally, my original permit that I applied for, I had this dock over on this side, and the Corps of Army Engineers was for it, and OGS was okay, but the Department of State and DEC refused it because it was too close to the wetlands. And they said they really don't want to disturb this area whatsoever, even if I was going to put a 40-footer out there. Then I tried again to do this and keep it shorter and maybe a little bit more over here, but I would need some dredging because this is very, very shallow in this area, super shallow. And they wouldn't allow that. So then they said, just keep it where you have it and put the hoist on the other side so it doesn't interfere with the 10-foot side setback. That was the biggest complaint with our neighbor because before it was positioned perpendicular to the dock. So now we moved it over to this side, or we're trying to move it over to this side. And therefore, it'll be more than 12 feet off the property line.
So if that jet ski platform is moved to the north side, then there's not going to be a boat or jet ski or any other thing that's going to be docked, moored, or hoisted within 10 feet of the adjoining property line because you're telling me that's 12.3 feet, correct?
To this edge?
Yes.
Right. But not to this edge?
Right. But as I understand it, the code requires that you dock the boat, it cannot be docked, hoisted, or moored within 10 feet of an adjoining property line. So if the hoist is on the north side and the jet ski platform is on the north side and the boats are all docked, moored, or hoisted on the north side, there's 12.3 feet between them and the property line. Is that right?
Yeah, probably a little over that.
Okay. So it's more than 10 feet, which is what the code requires?
Correct.
All right. So that then wouldn't require a variance from the side setback. We're only talking about the dock, right?
That's correct.
And there's at least 6 feet, you're saying, between the property line and the edge of the dock?
Correct.
And the dock is how wide? Looks like it's about 6 feet?
6 feet wide, yeah. 6 feet wide.
And it needs to be 6 feet?
I already purchased it.
Then they're also indicating that you don't own to the water line. Is that correct?
Nobody in this area owns to the water line.
They claim they do.
Yeah, that's a survey map.
All right.
The first time that this came up, I knew that this was going to be a long process because everything on the bay is extremely sensitive, and you've got so many different groups involved with putting their stamp of approval on things, as you have experienced. And it's just difficult. I don't know if there are other docks down there of similar length or similar problems, or if this is kind of a unique situation.
There are, but this is very unique because it's such shallow waters. And you're right, because three times this summer, three out of the four agencies approved what I was going to do. But then the fourth, one time was OGS, next time was DEC, and then the other time was the Corps. So each one, I thought I had it set, and I was ready to come before to town, and then they would say, oh, no, we don't like it. Why don't you do this? Then I'd say, okay. So I would try to do that. So it's definitely been very interesting.
Now it's about time we got this done, and before it's time to put everything away for the winter.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. It's already done.
That's a shame, isn't it?
It is.
I guess it's just part of the process.
Yeah.
All right. So in the letter that was received from your neighbors, they indicate that use of the south side of the dock for any, you know, docking of any boats is going to be an encroachment on their property. So if, as a condition of the, if we were to grant the variance with a condition that no boats will be docked on the south side, is that going to create a problem for you?
It might going forward because this hoist is, it depends on the depth of water. Because Plan 2014, I'm not sure, nobody's sure exactly what the depth of the lake level's going to be. So if I can't use the hoist because it needs an extra 15 inches of depth for the boat, I would always move it onto this side of the dock.
Well, if you move it onto that side of the dock, it appears to me that then you're encroaching in their property. So that's why I'm, I mean...
Yeah. Well, I can park it in front. I can try to come right through here and park it in front.
And that's why I'm saying that if there's no, as a condition of any variance, that there be no boats docked on the south side of the dock. That would respect their property line and address most, not all, but most of their concerns.
Yeah. I know it'll be rough with a boat on this side.
What we're considering, Mr. Chairman, is the length of the dock and the parking lanes on both sides of the dock as far as this variance is concerned?
I believe that the, I'm trying to find, here it is. It's the setback of the dock to be set back more than 10 feet from the property line extended into the bay. The maximum length of 50 feet versus 90, and the square footage of the dock. So, according to the application, you were looking for a 5-foot variance for the side of the dock on the south side, a 40-foot variance for the length of the dock, and 340 square feet variance for the square footage of the dock from 200, which would be 50 by 4, and you've got 6 feet by 90.
Correct.
And when you decided to put in the 6-foot dock as opposed to a 4-foot dock, were you then aware of the requirement of the town that it be 200 feet?
No, I wasn't.
Why not?
Ignorance. I've had docks in there for years.
Well, they acknowledge that. They say that the docks that you've had in there for years have all been compliant with the code. They've been smaller, they haven't extended as far out. This is almost twice, double the length out into the water that you're asking to have approved, and it's half again as wide as what was there. A 4-foot dock by 50 feet, that's what you had there before, right? Or that's what the town code allows for?
No, it was more square footage than that. I have aerial photos to prove it, which I can show you in the past.
I guess I'm concerned by the fact that, and I don't know at this point because I'm still waiting to hear what everybody else has to say, but I'm concerned about the fact that you went ahead and got a dock without checking into what the requirements were and finding out whether or not it would be approved. Because we've had lots of other people who've come before us too, and they say, well, I didn't know, and I went ahead and I bought it, and therefore, I'm asking for forgiveness instead of permission. And there have been occasions where we've denied that. And I'm trying to sort out in my mind whether this is an occasion where we should deny forgiveness and insist on closer compliance to what the code requirements are, or whether this is an instance where it would be appropriate. I'm not, I'm concerned about the 90 feet versus the 50 feet. I'm concerned about the fact that if we grant this and then you use the south side of the dock, that's, we're then in a position of having approved something that is, your neighbors are claiming is going to result in encroachments on their property rights. And that's not something that we're allowed by law to give you permission to violate your neighbor's property rights. But, you know, as you've got it laid out on that thing, that hoist goes right up to the property line. That's a 0-foot setback. And that, I won't speak for everybody else, but I'm certainly not inclined to agree to a 0-foot setback for that. It's portable, it can be put on the other side, and then that doesn't, at least has some respect for the setback and the purpose of the setback.
Right. Okay. It's not a game changer for me. I just put it there to make it a little easier. Instead of going around everything, and because it's so shallow over here, and there's a lot of weeds out here, and the jet skis suck everything up, I just thought it would be an easier run.
But your original application showed it over there. You had intended to do that originally.
Right. Exactly. And then I talked to the lady at the Department of State, and she said, I sent them this before I sent you that. I sent them something similar to this with a jet ski hoist on this side. And she said, if you change it over, then we have to go back and re-change it. So that's why...
But it's not a permanent thing, right?
No, it's not. It should be...
So I don't understand why they would be getting involved if it's on the north side or the south side, if it's something that's temporary. From what you're describing, it could be moved in an hour maybe, right?
Even less.
Even less.
It takes about five minutes to pop off.
Right. Precisely. So it's not something that even needs to be there permanently. So it's not like, it's like putting out a floating raft. I don't think you need it.
Right.
But maybe you do.
It's just, if you dealt with some of these agencies, it's, once you submit a drawing, it's, you know, that's the one that they're approving. And to go back, it might, because what just happened recently, Seneca Lake had some flooding issues. Well, they're way backed up now. They were backed up from the flood of last year. Now the DEC, the Corps, the Department of State is even more backed up. And I was getting nervous. I didn't want to have another delay, two, three months. So I just said, all right, I'll just keep it on that side.
So if we were to, if we were inclined to grant your variance with a condition that nothing will be docked or attached to the south side of the dock, you can live with that?
I can live with that, yep.
But does he have to go back to the Department of State for approval?
I will have to, yes. But if that's going to make this happen...
I don't get that, but if you do, you do. I don't see what, if they're letting the hoist be on the north side, I don't see what the problem is they'd have with it, something that you can hook and unhook in, as you say, about 10 minutes.
Yeah, I think I can convince them.
I think so.
Now, in other cases that we've dealt with on the bay, sometimes the neighbors will come in and talk to us about, well, if he's allowed to do that, that ruins our total view of the north perspective of the bay or block something or other. And they get very adamant about that. And up to this point, unless I've missed something here, I don't, we haven't heard that kind of an objection about this plan.
Oh, that's in the neighbor's letter too. That this dock going out more than, almost double what's allowed will impair their view of the marsh area and impair the fishing. And I'm trying, let me find their letter. It was attached to the original application. No, that's the...
This is years in the past, just so you know.
Oh, okay.
Plus, it was right on his property, right off his property. He had no objection then. Trying to find it here. Oh, here it is. "It will dramatically impact our view and restrict our water access along with fishing access to the marsh area immediately north of the dock." Who owns the marsh area immediately north of the dock? The state?
Right.
All right. So there's no entitlement to the view, and there's no entitlement to access to the marsh area other than what the state chooses to afford, right? They own that?
Yeah, that's correct. That's why there was a little bit of a problem before with my attorney. Because it was all state property, even the property that's down here, the land that's down here, it's a unique situation. The lands all the way around the bay, on the around the quay side, the state owns near Bay Shore, the bottom portion.
They just give you license to use it?
Correct. So I thought, what my attorney thought also, and so did the surveyor that I was using, thought if we had permission from all the agencies from the state, that it wouldn't be necessary to get a permit from the town. That was one of the issues at the beginning.
That's always an issue.
Yeah.
And you said you presented water depth charts to the state agencies that showed that the water depth at the end of the 90-foot dock is different than the water depth at 50 feet?
Yes. I broke it down every 10 feet out, and I videoed it and sent it to them. They came out to the site to see it, so to verify it. And I fell off my kayak showing them, but they saw what I was doing. So they saw it themselves that it was definitely a difference, and they approved it.
What was that photograph you were just holding up? What was that?
This is an aerial shot in the past where I've had, this is my dock. If you, my proposed, my proposed dock is here now. That's how much further I'm moving it over.
So that was the original dock to the property?
This was one of the originals, yes.
And that's actually on somebody else's property though, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Step right up. Only the applicants and their representatives are sworn.
Okay. I'm just here to support Joe in what he's trying to accomplish.
Can you identify yourself by name and address, please?
My name is Christopher Brett. I live at 1336 Bay Shore Boulevard. I'm just sympathetic for him because I understand his situation there with the shallow water, the cattails and all that. the cattails and all that, uh, living on the bay. Uh, harboring a boat in front of your house is one of the benefits of living on the bay. Um, unfortunately, he's in a very precarious situation there with the cattails, the water depth. Um, so I sympathize with him and, uh, I believe there are numerous docks along the bay. I've lived there quite some time where the, uh, they go out into the water, um, much, you know, ninety feet, a hundred feet with boat hoists at the end of these with asphalt shingle roofs on them, uh, metal roofs, and, um, quite large roofs over these boat hoists. Um, if, and if you ever drive around the bay, they're there. So I feel as though, uh, what he's trying to do is fair and, uh, for living on the bay. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the application?
Uh, Angelo Prestigiacomo, thirteen sixty-four Bay Shore. Um, it's my father's house. A lot of times, uh, you know, grandkids, everyone comes over. It's, it's very difficult, especially being there with all the boats around that. Especially this year and last year with the water issue, not being able to go out. And especially if you can't get out that far, can't, not having a boat kind of defeats the purpose of, of where you are. And obviously, if you didn't have that shallowness, this wouldn't even be an issue. But unfortunately, it is, so we're trying to compensate best we can for it. So I'm definitely in favor for that.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? Step right up.
No, I'm just going to point out that that's not all your dock.
It doesn't matter, it's the length of the dock. The second dock.
I'm sorry, Mr. Legozio?
I'm, uh, Christopher Legozio. My family and I live at thirteen seventy Bay Shore. We're Joe's neighbor. Um, obviously, you got our letter back in June. Um, you've gone through a lot of our concerns. Um, this new dock is considerably larger than what's been there in the past. And it does have a bit, a bit of impact on our house. What Joe built in two thousand and seventeen, it actually does encroach over the property line. We've been dealing with that for about two years. Um, what he's proposing will remove the encroachment of the dock. But as you pointed out, with only six foot of setback, anything on that side of the dock will actually probably be an encroachment on our property. Um.
But would the condition that I suggested that the south side of the dock cannot be used for anything that would alleviate that? It being.
Yeah, that would alleviate it. Um, this has been a little bit stressful for us because, like, you know, we would have to worry about how that would be enforced. Um, and, and how we would make sure that that didn't happen, I guess would be our concern.
Well, it would be a condition of the variance?
No, I understand.
Well, I, I. If the condition of the variance is violated, does that vi- avoid the variance?
Uh, well, they wouldn't be able to obtain the building permit, um, necessary, uh, if they can't meet one of the conditions.
But if the dock is already there and boats are parked on the south side of it?
You know, if, if, uh, my understanding is that it was built without a, without a building permit, um, and, and the town is, is, uh, you know, not, not enforcing that while the zoning board of appeals, uh, case is pending. But once the zoning board of appeals has made a decision, um, that, that enforcement issue is, is no longer, is, is, is active again because it's.
But once, once there's a, a permit, if there's a permit, um, granted, and then there's boats parked on the south side, how would, what would that impact?
That's an enforcement issue for the town.
Okay, okay.
And I, I believe that the code provides that upon a complaint and that the town has the authority to take action against the owner in the town court to enforce, uh, and to, uh, penalize the owner for any violations. I think there's a, as I recall from a case I had some involvement a while ago, I believe there's a two hundred and fifty dollar a day fine.
Okay, all right. Um, I would also like to point out that because of the way the houses and the shoreline are oriented here, um, that dock is sort of right in the primary view out towards the bay from our house. Um, so going out, you know, forty feet longer than what's allowed by code does actually have a significant impact, negative impact on our property. Um, and I don't know, you know, I've been in the water out there in my kayak and in my waders, and I'm not, you know, in front of my house, there's not a lot of difference in depth between fifty feet and ninety feet. Um, I haven't seen any water depth charts as part of Joe's application. Um, I didn't prepare any myself, but, um, it didn't seem that much deeper when I've been out there. I also think that there aren't any docks that long in this stretch of Bay Shore Boulevard. I think it's a little bit out of character. The houses are very close, the lots are narrow, um, and there aren't any docks that extend out ninety feet. I don't think there's anything that extends further than fifty feet into the bay along this stretch of, of Bay Shore Boulevard. And I've talked with quite a few of the neighbors that actually, uh, are opposed to a ninety foot dock because of the precedence that it will set. Um, and I've got signatures from a handful of neighbors. I don't have ten copies, but. Uh, did I, I'm sorry, did I give you? These are the copies. So there's, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight neighbors that have signed a, a statement saying that they would oppose a ninety foot, uh, dock length variance because of the precedent that it would set in the neighborhood. And I guess given that, we'd just like to, you know, point out that we think it's got a negative impact on our property and we're opposed to the, the ninety foot variance. Um, we could live with the side setback variance if, you know, that side of the dock doesn't have boats on it.
Mr. Chairman, what I don't understand is, oh, since his, since the dock is next to cat, cat, next to the end of the waterway, what negative impact will it have on your, on your house other than seeing?
It's, it's primarily the view, um. Let's see. When you look out the front of our house, directly out, our house is turned a little bit. All the houses are turned a little bit with the shoreline. Um, so, you know, Mr. Prestigiacomo's dock extends right out into the primary view. I sit on my front couch and all I can see is dock and his boat lift, um, out of my front windows. I do have a little bit of concern. My kids like to kayak and canoe and little sail out there. Um, the way his boat lift is oriented now, parallel to the shore, makes it difficult to watch them. It will be maybe a little bit easier, but still difficult with, you know, that much dock and, and lift projecting out into, into our view.
I'm looking at the, uh, aerial photographs that are dated June twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen. That I believe you attached.
That's in my letter, yes.
And I'm looking at the, at thirteen fifty-six and thirteen thirty-six. And twelve eighty-two and twelve seventy-six. And eleven ninety, which, eleven ninety may, maybe not, but the rest of them appear to, to go out into the bay, the ones I've just identified. Roughly the same length as what is depicted here in June, which if I understand it is not there now, right? Cause that looks like it's on your property.
That, yeah. Um, in the past, we've, we've had, uh, Joe's docks from our property as well as, um, his son's property before his son had purchased it, um, directly south of us. I mean, and actually, this picture. This is Joe's dock, this is Joe's dock. I had to put my dock here in my boat because there wasn't room in here between these two docks, uh, after he put him in the water.
So his, but his dock is moved north now, right?
His dock is moved north, yeah. But I mean, this was only a fifty foot dock and it would end onto it to make room for my boat.
So as of June of twenty eighteen, that dock was still there?
Um.
I, I'm looking at this picture that I think you attached it.
Yes.
Your twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen.
Yep.
Yeah, the aerial photo. The page eleven and fourteen, up at the top, thirteen seventy, shows an L, what looks like a white, uh, L shaped.
Yes.
That looks like it's entirely on your property.
Yes.
Oh, it's a twenty fifteen aerial. Okay. All right, seeing all these dates confusing to me, but counsel's pointed out that under notes to the right hand side of the page, it says it's twenty fifteen aerial. So that's a fifty foot dock?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was much smaller. It didn't have as large a boat and as large a lift with a roof on it. There was no lift there at the time. I'd also like to point out that actually our property is deeded all the way to the property line, or all the way to the water line. There are quite a few properties along that stretch that have been, the state lands have been annexed to the properties.
Well, we don't get into property issues.
No, I understand. It was brought up in Joe's statement that none of the lands are owned by property owners, but that's not the case.
Actually, I brought it up because you said in your letter that you owned to the water and he didn't. And that's how it came up. But that's really not relevant to what we're talking about, I don't think. So that dock that I was using as a reference, you're saying is fifty feet out into the water. So those other docks that I mentioned would be about fifty feet out into the water?
Yes.
Okay.
On that, that picture, it shows a brown dock extended beyond the white dock?
Yes.
Is that, did you add that in?
We, we put that in. That's a dock that has been in front of my property for years.
Okay.
Um, and.
Is that?
When, when Joe put his in with that L on it, it sort of made it impossible for me to get my dock on my property out to that point. I had not been aware that he was gonna put the L on that dock. So my option was to go out past the end of his to make room for my dock.
Cause according to my mapping, that dock extended out a hundred and fifteen feet.
It, it went out a ways, but that was a, a one-year thing because of the way that Joe put his docks in that summer. And again, these are all, uh, removable docks, not permanent, unpiling docks, so.
So those docks get taken out in the winter, is that it?
Yes, yeah.
But his won't be, right?
Well, I guess the floating portions come out. The lift will remain.
Lift stays, okay.
And the, uh, roof on the lift is still in the water currently.
All right. All right, any other questions or comments from the board for Mr. Legozio? Anyone else wish to address this application? You, you do, you have that option.
All right.
All right. First of all, this was my, uh, daughter's wedding. Doesn't she look beautiful? But anyways, um, it's, you can see the dock in the background. It was always L-shaped. I've always had it L-shaped because it's a lot easier to pull in. All right, when you go, when you go south, south to north, you have depth. That's why I originally put it in parallel, the hoist, parallel to the, uh, the shoreline. And now I'm changing it.
That dock was on your neighbor's property, right?
That's correct.
All right.
And the one year in, in that we added the other one, we, we did it together. We weren't, uh, we weren't arguing at that time. And it wasn't because I put my dock out there. It was because he had gotten a sailboat and we added that so he can put it into the water, which is no problem. Uh, also. The ninety feet, if you look at this hoist. From here, I would say from about thirty feet in, it's, this water depth is just tough to navigate to try to get a boat in there. So if I shorten this up back to thirty feet so their view's better, down, down to fifty feet, I'm saying, cut it back forty, I won't be able to put any boats in here. So therefore, I'll have one boat, one hoist, and if it's a, if, if the, the water's shallow there, you're, I'll have it till, I'll have to take my boat out at the end of July, beginning of August at, at, at best. So the reason for the depth, for the length of it is, you know, threefold, which I didn't mention about the boats, because I'm gonna have to keep them on, on this side, is not only for more stable, I didn't say it was deeper water. It's a more stable depth out ninety feet. Over here, it can be two feet deep and then it goes right to one foot, then it goes eighteen inches. But out here, it stays a solid, let's say twenty-four inches. It's more stable. That's why I went with the length that I'm, that I'm proposing, the ninety feet. So if you just imagine this to here, okay, and my, my, now, now the hoist is here and comes down to here. So I'm, I'm gonna have to pull, I got just this to work with, which is nothing. It's like a cup of water. I won't be able to use anything here. It's unnavigable water. That's why we were applying for the ninety.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. We'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. Um, is there anyone here with respect to the application pertaining to Eight Coalwood Drive? Okay. So I guess that remains on the table.
If you want to. It's up, it's up to you.
Well, he agreed to table it to, he agreed to table it.
I don't, I don't remember what, um, exactly was said at the prior meeting about when it would be reopened.
I happen to have minutes right here. Didn't we receive something from him?
I thought we had. I did receive an email.
According to the minutes, it was just tabled and the hearing was held open. So that he could resubmit a revised application, which I thought he had. Yeah, this is dated September twentieth. All right, I'll make a motion, seeing that the applicant for Eight Coalwood Drive is not present, that we continue to table that application.
Second.
Uh, to the November meeting and that a notice be given to the applicant that if there's no appearance at the November meeting, that the application will be deemed to be withdrawn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. The board is all present, so to speak. So we will take, uh, an adjournment for, uh, ten minutes. We'll recess. So we will take, uh, an adjournment for, uh, ten minutes. We'll recess. Together, it appears that the only applicant who's still present is Mr. Presto Giacomo with respect to the application at thirteen seventy Bay Shore, is it Boulevard? Bay Shore Boulevard.
Thirteen seventy-two.
Thirteen seventy-two. What did I say? Thirteen seventy? Alright, sorry about that. Alright, with respect to this app, excuse me, with respect to this application, does anyone wish to make a motion?
Mrs. Chairman, uh, I make a motion that we approve, uh, the application as requested. Uh, with the findings, let me see if I can find my findings. Um, because of the environmental, um, impact, there's really come no alternatives to what, uh, to what he wants to do other than, um, uh, changing where he launches his boat. Um, it doesn't really change the na- the character of the neighborhood. Um, walking out on the property, uh, the two times I've visited, um, I, I can understand the impact on the kayaking with the kids, but I don't really see a major impact, uh, on the property. Um, the effects of the physical environment, or as stated by the four agencies that, that have, um, uh, that have looked at the property and, and given their input over the last six months or so, have been trying this application through, through. The situation is self-created. Um, he could have lived somewhere else, could have bought a different property, um, but he didn't. Uh, overall, I don't think there's gonna be a major impact, uh, as requested. He can also offer the use of his, uh, boat launch to his neighbor to alleviate pressures, uh, that way. Kind of a free, uh, a good neighbor policy. But that's up to him. Um, did I miss anything on the elements? Sounds about right, yeah.
That's it.
Yes.
I, um, I'll second the, the motion with a condition that the south side of the dock not be used for, uh, any purpose at any time. And would add to the findings that the, this is an area variance, so the standard is whether or not the condition, uh, the, um, code imposes a practical hardship. Uh, the applicant's testimony concerning the need for, uh, the further distance uh, into the bay in order to provide more stable, uh, depth, uh, would establish a, um, practical, uh, hardship, uh, based on the unstable conditions, uh, closer to the shore with respect to the views. Nobody has a, a, a right to preserve any particular view, uh, and, uh, I agree it's self-created. Uh, but I don't think that the self-creation, uh, outweighs the practical difficulties that were established. I'm, uh, not happy with the fact that this was done without checking to see what the requirements were. And that is very troubling. But I think under the circumstances, having it reviewed by all of those state agencies that at this point, provided the south side is not used for any purpose at any time, uh, I think I could go along with that. The, is that condition okay?
Yes.
Any, uh, discussion? This is a type two action for secret purposes.
Jim, second round?
Can I make a suggestion on the condition?
Sure.
Rather than making the condition that the south side of the dock not be used for anything, um, if there's a way to, you, you, you might wanna word the condition to say that the encroachment can't go beyond what the diagram shows as the south edge of the dock itself. Um, that way you're not adding something about the use, but you're saying that no, um, structure, no boat hoist can be built farther than, and I don't have the, I'm not sure exactly what that, uh.
Said it was six feet.
Six feet. So you could limit it to six feet without, and then you wouldn't need to say anything about the use of the dock, but there, no other structure can be built.
Well, I was incorporating the code requirement that no docks or hoist can be within ten feet. So we're not granting, alright, so the condition I guess would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the variance is limited to the location of the dock and granted only for the dock to that point.
Correct.
So that would incorporate the boats to the south side?
Yes, I think that, that might be a better way to word it.
Alright, so, um.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, when you're done writing, could you re-clarify, please?
The granting of the variance is, is limited to the location of the dock only. It is not a variance as to any of the, of the other applicable requirements, including but not limited to those pertaining to mooring, docking, hoisting of, uh, boats and water vessels.
So it's not subject to the south side of the dock not be used for any purposes, correct?
No, it's, the variance is granted only to the, is limited to the location of the dock only. And not, it is not a variance of any other applicable requirements, including but not limited to mooring, docking of boats, et cetera. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thanks. Any other dis- any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One board member is absent, but Mr. Scott is present. So we have a fully constituted board and the application is approved. Alright, the next item for consideration is the application pertaining to one eighty Whipple Lane. Does anyone have, uh, want, this is a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make an application, a motion with respect to this application? I will spit it out correctly.
I move that we approve this application. I submitted with the following findings, uh, just will not change the character of the neighborhood, especially since it's already a big fence there that, uh, goes into that corner lot syndrome thing. Uh, and because of the limited area, there's not a, an alternative to, uh, to what he wants to do. And it's very small in nature, so that takes care of number three. It's not a substantial, uh, request. Uh, will have no effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the area. And it, it is self-created, but it's self-created from the standpoint that there are, um, extenuating circumstances that, uh, he would like to, uh, personally, uh, take care of with his, with his family. That's the motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One member is absent, but we are fully constituted nonetheless. The next application on the agenda pertains to six eighty-four Lake Shore Boulevard. This is a type two action for secret purposes. Uh, does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Well, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Alright.
Uh, I move that we, uh, approve the application for the, uh, the large garage. Where do I put this thing? Uh, with the following findings, uh, First of all, the, um, the area of the property where he wants to put the garage is more than adequate for this building and still stays within the guidelines of the town code with regard to percentage of lot coverage. In addition, although this is a substantial request because of the size of the structure, they have the room for it, and it's also, um, the way he's got it set up, it's out of view. And he's got, he's got a nice secluded place to put this, to put this building if we approve it. It should not have any effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. It's simply a garage. At least that's all that was on the application. And it's a self-created, absolutely self-created, because he's got quite a few pieces of personal property that he wants to protect, and I guess if I had the room or in my own situation, I'd probably want to do the same thing. Keep those vehicles home and out of the weather and without bothering the neighborhood. And I think that's what this does.
I'll second the motion. I would note that recently we've had two applications before us where we've had similar issues and we've reached two different conclusions. And I believe that the distinction between the two is that the application we denied last month would have, is a structure that was going to be twice the size of what this application is, and it was going to be equipped with equipment that would not lend itself to residential use, therefore potentially opening the door in the future to a use variance application based on the fact that, that there was a structure that was enormous and that had equipment that couldn't, was inconsistent with residential use. The application that we approved earlier for the garage in the backyard south of, or north of Bishop Carney, I can't remember the name of the street, that was for residential use, and it was a smaller size, and it was clearly, you know, in conjunction with a residential use of the property. This, I believe, is closer to that, and although it's larger than that, and I would say is pushing pretty much the edge of how many large structures can be on one property that are related to residential use, I think it's just the side of that, so I would second the motion. Any other discussion?
I just want to, I just want to bring up the fact that, you know, just looking at the property, going to the property, you really can't see it from Lake Shore Boulevard. Those arborvitaries really block. I mean, you wouldn't even know it was there. They really block, and it's set far way back, so you really wouldn't know that it was there.
And the neighbor to the west, who's the only neighbor that would be affected by it, submitted a letter indicating that they consented to it, and I guess the property owner even let them pick out the color of the siding and the roof, so that at least shows cooperation among the neighbors, which is a wonderful thing to see.
Yeah, I still have concerns about the size. I mean, it's almost the size of their house. And as far as keeping with the character of the neighborhood, I think it has a really commercial or industrial look to it. Doesn't seem to fit with the character of the neighborhood. I realize there's arborvitaries blocking the view for now, but arborvitaries aren't permanent structures. They may not always be there.
Well, and then there's the, you know, there's always the, you know, what we talked about with the two other applications that the chair, you know, brought up, like what's going to happen when these people leave, you know? So, just food for thought.
Well, this isn't anything that lends itself to a commercial use, because it's merely a, it's like a barn. Some properties had barns. And, you know, somebody who owns it, they can put in a huge, you know, workshop or family room or something like that, and it doesn't necessarily going to give rise to anything commercial, whereas the other one just seemed to have commercial written all over it.
Ultimately, I believe with the first, the first garage we approved, maybe two or three months back?
Yeah, we cut it back.
Yeah, we went back and forth with him quite a bit to try to come up with something that really fit the neighborhood, wouldn't be unreasonable twenty, thirty years down the road. And I just have concerns that we're looking at a situation that's, you know, more so in that direction with this garage.
I think because of the size of, of the property that this is on, I mean, I'm also recalling the-
I know access was an issue for that also.
Yeah.
And these, they do have access.
They have plenty of access.
It's not an issue with going on their neighbor's lawn or something to get back there, which I know was an issue with that, but-
And a while ago, we approved a structure just east of five ninety off of Empire that I see every time I'm going north on five ninety, and we approved that for him to store a number of his cars in. It was tucked back, it was against the expressway. It was about this size, as I recall.
Yeah, I remember that.
And, uh, um, that, that has been there for a number of years and does not seem to have had any negative impact upon the neighborhood or the development in the neighborhood. And I think that because of the fact that this is tucked back on a large property and, and yes, now it's not visible, but potentially in the future, if somebody decided to cut down the arborvitae, certainly it could be, but even sitting at a hundred feet back off the road, I don't think that it has that much of an impact as a larger structure on that other property would have and the humongous thing that we turned down last month. So, I mean, I, and if Mr. Polino and Mr. LaPerry were here, they'd, I'm sure they would be telling us that this is all occasion because he's got a lot of toys and he wants to store his toys and he can store his toys elsewhere. And those are all valid points as well. But on balance, I think this is, it's okay. Anyone else have any comments or questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One member of the board is absent, but we are nevertheless fully constituted. The next item is actually two applications. One is for, uh, they're both relating to two fifty Empire Boulevard. One is for a use variance, the other is for an area variance. These are unlisted actions, I believe, correct?
Yes.
Alright, I'm learning, see? And so I would make, attached to the application was a short environmental assessment form, and the conclusion at, at the bottom of the, at the end of that form after conducting the analysis of the environmental impact was that the proposed action would not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and I would move that we so find. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstention. One member is absent, but we are nevertheless fully constituted. The, with respect to the use variance, and that environmental determination applies to both of these variance applications. With respect to the use variance application, I would make a motion to grant the variance. I would note that according to the information that's available to us, this property was the subject of a use variance application in nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand, preceding all of the current members of the board. Nonetheless, the board at that time made findings that were not challenged and have ripened into, um, what is referred to often as the law of the case, and that provides that once you've made a determination and it has been affirmed and withstood any challenge, that it continues to be a ripened fact. So the fact that the use variance was granted for the front parcel earlier, I would view as a determination that binds us with respect to the parcel to the rear. Although the applicant did not present any dollars and cents proof, as is usually required for a use variance, that proof was apparently before and satisfied the board previously. This parcel is immediately behind it, is landlocked, has a grade that makes it difficult to even use without alteration, is too small to construct a residence, and if for no other reason than the fact that it's landlocked and the only accessibility to it is through the parcel as to which there's already a use variance, I would submit that the requirements for obtaining a use variance have been met, and all, the only condition that I would impose on the variance is that the properties be, um, what do you call it, when you, the opposite of re-subdivided? They're going to be combined into a single parcel. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One member is absent, but we are still fully constituted. Next, uh, application before us is the application for the same parcel for the area variance. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? Seeing none, I'll make a motion that we approve the area variance. As requested, this will not result in any adverse change to the character of the neighborhood. There really is no alternative that would not require a variance. It's not a substantial request. It's not going to have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the property, and to the extent that it's self-created, it's a situation that was also unavoidable, given the parameters of the property.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries, seven votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. One member is absent, but we continue to be fully constituted, along with the materials that we all received with respect to tonight's meeting. We received a draft of minutes from the meeting of September tenth? It's because I'm looking at the back of it. September tenth, minutes, yes. Helps if I turn them right side up. And everyone have a chance to review the minutes of the September meeting as prepared? Are there any suggested changes or additions or corrections to the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries-
I was not present. I'll abstain, I wasn't present.
One abstention. So the motion carries, six votes in favor, one abstention, no opposed, one member of the board is absent, but we continue to be fully constituted. And with that, we are adjourned.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Oronicoid Zoning Board on ICAT Government Access.